Six o'clock, you have to call the meeting in order. Uh, call roll please.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mrs. Garlick-Lorenzetti?
Here.
Mr. Waddams?
Present.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Proudy?
Here.
Mr. Kaiser?
Here.
Mr. Lazaro?
Present.
Mr. Churchill?
Here.
Mr. Cronenwetter?
Here.
Mr. McGreevy?
Here.
Mr. Heisen?
Here.
Mr. Westfall?
Here.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Trout?
Here.
You have a floor, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Before we stand for the pledge and for a moment of silence, I'd like to recognize Melanie Mel Maravito from Maravito and Home Service. She passed away on September 11th. She's been employed by the county since September of '08. She'll be missed immensely by the Highway Department and the people that work at our Ramona's Garage. And so, well, after the pledge, we have a moment of silence. I appreciate your presence. Thank you. Thank you. Stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first thing on your agenda is Delago Long Day and Jeff Boginsky, General Manager of Delago. And James McKenna.
Good evening. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jim McKenna. I'm the Vice President of Construction for Womerang Construction. Just to give you a quick update on where we're at on the project, we are currently seventy-three percent through our time duration that we planned for the project, and we're seventy-four percent complete with the casino. So, almost day for day, we're right on target with where we want to be inside the casino itself. We're at this point working on finishes, painting, putting data cable trays underneath the floor, getting ready to put the computer floor down. A lot of the offices are substantially complete at this point in time, getting kitchen equipment ready to move in, a lot of tile work, and getting ready to start the permanent power and permanent heating and cooling. The hotel is now completely framed up. It was a concrete structure. It took a better part of five months to form and pour the entire structure. Now that that's complete, we're able to frame on the exterior and interior, and you will start to see exterior finishes on the hotel before October 1st. You'll start to see evas and hopefully stone before October 1st. And the look will be exactly what the renderings are, but very similar to what you've seen if you've driven by on the casino. Parking garage is in gray shade. We started parking garage pre-cast erection out of eight-one, and our target was to finish all the larger erection by ten-one, and we'll probably be two weeks ahead of schedule on that. We expect to be finished either Friday or Monday with all the large pieces, and then we'll start bugging up all the smaller pieces of that. And that's about it on construction.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Jim, one of the things that was touted when you came to Seneca County was the amount of construction jobs that you had to create. How much do you have of construction people on the on-site now?
Currently, we're right about our peak, and it's right about where we projected. We're just over six hundred union employees on-site right now.
Daily?
Daily. Between the on-site work and also the road and bridge improvements around the area, but yes, associated with the project, directly working for the Delago project, right over six hundred. We were hovering around four fifty for quite a while, and finally getting the hotel to the point where we could get plumbing and electric, all the MEP roughing trades inside that building, along with more carpenters and more carpenters on the outside framing, plus the roofers are back. So, we finally hit that peak where all the buildings are going at once.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Those of you who do not know me, my name is Jeff Boginsky. I'm the Executive Vice President and General Manager of Delago Resort and Casino. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. When I'm not giving Jim a hard time on where surveillance cameras and slot machines should go, the three things that, you know, I think about on a daily basis are the three Ts, and that's taxes, which means we're driving revenue, tourism, and then team members. Well, obviously, we're not open right now, so we'll take out the revenue and the taxes piece, and we're heavily involved and very active in trying to hire eighteen hundred team members for our opening, about fifteen hundred for when we open the casino, and then another three hundred when we open up the hotel about four to six months later. Currently, we've hired nineteen of our executives and managers, and I will, I'm glad to report that ten of those nineteen have actually been hired from the region. Right now, we are actively interviewing Ford Dealer School, and Dealer School is a free class. We're looking to train four hundred and eighty regional residents to learn the skill, or we'll give them the skills, but learn the trade of dealing cards at the casino. We will have two semesters, the first one being October 3rd. We're looking to train two hundred and forty, and then a second semester which begins on November 28th, and then again, we're looking to train another two hundred and forty. At the end of the day, we'll have over five hundred and fifty dealers when we open the doors. With that, we will have three classes. The first one's eight to twelve, the second one's one to five, and the third one is from six to ten. And that is at no cost to them. The only thing that's going to cost them is their time, and that's really unusual for our industry because it's in New York City, they're charging potential employees two thousand dollars to learn how to deal cards. National Harbor in Baltimore, Washington area, was charging right around three hundred and seventy-five, and most recently, the casino to the east of us was charging north of three hundred. So, we are doing this at no cost to them, and over the last several days, we've been interviewing, and right now, as of this morning, does not include the interviews that we had this today. We've already scheduled and assigned one hundred and eighty-eight to dealer school of the two hundred and forty for the first semester. In addition to that, we have over two thousand applicants, and right now, we have twenty-eight positions posted. Now, granted, you know, over four hundred of those are for our dealer school, but we have two thousand applicants, and I will say we have over twelve hundred of those applications that have come from within twenty miles of our casino location. So, that's over fifty percent. More specifically, we've had ten percent come from Seneca Falls, twelve and a half percent from Waterloo, seven and a half percent from Geneva, and eleven and a half percent from Auburn. So, we're doing really well from a hiring standpoint. Came out of the gate rather slow, but we've had several job fairs, and we have quite a few more coming up. We have three tomorrow. We're going to be very active. We will have one at Cuyuga Community College, which is scheduled from four to seven. Then, we're also in Syracuse at Destiny USA Mall from noon to six. And then, we're also in Rochester tomorrow at the Doubletree from eleven to four. And then, we are scheduled to have another job fair on September 22nd down at the Lodi Fire Department. But again, doing really well. We're ramping up, and as Jim said, construction is moving right along. So, that's my update. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Yes?
How about fit boxes? Are they considered dealer enough, or are they a different breed?
That is a different breed.
Have you, or will you be hiring those?
We've actually started interviewing a few of those because we need those positions for dealer school. Correct.
Hi, guys. Jeff and Jim, we appreciate you coming in for the update, and we're looking forward to the ribbon cutting. If it's cold, we'll be there.
All right. Sounds great.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is employee recognition. Peg Birmingham would come up here, and I would appreciate staying in front of the podium here instead of out there so you can face everybody instead of everybody looking at your rear end. I'm not going to say.
Much appreciation.
I know. Hey, congratulations. Welcome. Okay, we're doing a little, you know, every once in a while, we have a person come in here that really appreciates not only by the people that you work with, but by the people that you worked for. So, tonight, we like to do a little thing for Peg. She came to Seneca County February in nineteen eighty-four. She would hire as an employment training assistant, better known as an ETA. So, from that point on, she would know that your estimated time of arrival, Peg.
How's that?
In October nineteen eighty-five, Peg was promoted to the position of Employment Training Councilor. Less than a year later, in August of eighty-six, she was promoted to Employment Training Director. While working full-time, Peg earned her master's degree through the educational program at Seneca County. In nineteen ninety-nine, Peg was appointed Deputy Commissioner of Human Services. When the county was in need of an IT director, Peg graciously accepted responsibility, in addition to her Deputy Commissioner duties from two thousand and two to September of two thousand and seven, so five years your work to have. Thank you very much. She was also served as the Staff Development Coordinator for DHS, and was instrumental in providing staff with valuable training that benefited them both professionally and personally. Her insight, direction, and knowledge will be greatly missed, and Seneca County wishes her nothing but the best when she retires. So, Peg, the certificate is presented to you in appreciation of your thirty-two-plus years of dedicated service devotion in community to the county. Thank you very much.
Sure. You said a lot of the things I was going to say, but the one thing that I keep repeating to Peg is that I was supposed to retire first. I've been older than her, I've been here longer, I was supposed to retire first, she was supposed to assume my position, and then she would be the person stuck with having to replace herself. But, you know, the opportunity was there, and she's taken advantage of it. You know, a lot of her history here that Chairman's already talked about. I mean, she and I, you know, have known each other for the thirty-two years that she's been here. We've seen seven different county managers come and go, and she said you were her favorite, Jim. And probably hundreds of board members, of which these, you guys are her favorites. But while she was here, you know, we developed a great relationship over the years. She was, she was my go-to person, you know, for all those years. She always loved the challenge and welcomed new pursuits. She's always got things done, not only for me, but for the county and for the community at home, as a whole. In the area of staff development, she always thought something was wrong, she had a training that could fix it. She always offered very valuable, relevant training to our staff. She had a passion for that and education and helping people better themselves. She worked with, you know, our staff and particularly our supervisors in developing their skills to make them better employees and helping our supervisors make their employees better at what they do. She was about camp competence and getting results. She and I didn't always agree, particularly in the area of politics and programs and personnel action, but, you know, we always thought, talked things out, and always came to the best decision for the organization and for the county. She's certainly an asset to Seneca County, you know, serving on many committees locally and statewide. I'm certain that when she settles down in Florida, she won't be sitting around, around the pool, you know, eating bonbons and sipping martinis. I'm sure she'll be involved in some community, some community activity or getting into some other occupation. So, you know, she's leaving us here. The family, she had a DHS in the county, but, you know, she will always be in her hearts, and I certainly wish you a glorious retirement, Peg.
Do you have anything you want to say? Be nice.
One correction.
Oh, yes.
That degree was a hundred percent Jay Ford by me.
Wow.
That's my mistake, Peg. Sorry.
Thousand dollars.
Well, due to the fine training you gave us, I will not, I will not give anybody a heck for giving me that.
Don't worry about it. The, I just, the only word I can say is grateful for what Seneca County has provided to me, to my family, the opportunities that it gave me, the challenges. I was never bored here. There was always something going on, and if there wasn't, there was something divine to do. We had a lot of really good friends here. I want to just publicly thank Peggy Sano and Marlene Exner for having my back, Kathy Corona for everything HR, and, you know, all of you for supporting me. There are, I don't know, eight county managers?
Seven.
Seven. You are. And then, you know, and all the department heads and all the people here. And I just encourage all of you, you know, to kind of remember those folks who are working here. They are just marvelous people, and they work so hard. And whatever you can do on that retention issue, try to do something for it because it really is a cost to the county. So, I thank all of you. Godspeed.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, petitioners. First up is Allison Stokes.
As many of you know, I have addressed this board a number of times. In the past, I have introduced myself simply as Allison Stokes. To use the titles associated with my credentials, I'm the Reverend Dr. Allison Stokes. I have hard-earned graduate degrees from Yale and Harvard. In recent years, I worked at the University of Rochester as Director of the Interfaith Chapel and also as Director of the M.K. Gandhi Institute for Nonviolence. Currently, I am Interfaith Chaplain at the New York Chiropractic College. To escape the noxious odors and toxic emissions of Seneca Meadows, the misnamed landfill, I moved from Seneca Falls to Rochester in July. Even so, I remain deeply connected here. I own a home and pay taxes in Seneca Falls. I am also leader of a nonprofit organization that owns the historic and deteriorating church next door to the Women's Rights National Historical Park on Ball Street. Because I care deeply about the health, well-being, and future of Seneca Falls and Seneca County, I commute back here regularly to help facilitate citizen efforts to close the landfill in 2017. When I called Margaret to ask her to list me as a petitioner, I had a clear idea of the focus of my remarks, the threat to public health from Seneca Meadows. Our landfill is the biggest in New York State, and Seneca County has the highest rate of cancer in New York State. I suggest that the two facts are related. I fear that when experts finally carry out long overdue studies of our air quality, we may experience Flint, Michigan's national notoriety. I had wanted tonight to read a letter to Seneca Falls and surrounding area community members from the Director of the Institute for Health and the Environment at the University of Auburn, David O. Carpenter, M.D. This letter gives many reasons, the many reasons Dr. Carpenter fully supports the immediate enactment of Local Law Number Seven, which would result in the landfill's closing. Unfortunately, time does not allow me to read these compelling reasons, but my understanding is that this will be published in the Finger Lakes Times as a guest opinion article on Sunday, September 25th, or later if news events make the change necessary. I urge you to watch for it. I do take time to share with you a remark from a friend, a fellow concerned citizen. He said, "I commend you for speaking to the county supervisors, but our experience has not brought any change that amounts to a constructive effort to close the landfill. Only Waterloo and Seneca Falls see it as an issue." Only Waterloo and Seneca Falls see it as an issue. This is my focus now. On the one hand, it makes sense to me that supervisors in other towns, particularly those at the south end of the county, might have little interest in efforts to close the landfill. Residents of Waterloo and Seneca Falls are the people in the so-called stinker zone. Residents of these towns are the ones who are suffering the stench and diminished quality of life. In these two towns, more and more citizens are posting for sale signs and are moving away. Also, only the town of Seneca Falls has the power to change the situation. To the tremendous frustration of landfill opponents in Waterloo and indeed in Geneva and the entire Finger Lakes region, only the town board of Seneca Falls has the power to close the landfill. When constituents of state Senator Nizzolio and state Assemblyman Brian Cole criticized legislators for not protecting public health by taking action against Seneca Meadows, both explained they had no power to do so. That power, they said, was in the hands of the town of Seneca Falls. A seasoned and skilled attorney from Cooperstown, Doug Zanellis, made the same point at the Seneca Falls Town Board meeting on February 2nd. He explained that the town could protect public health by passing a waste disposal law that, in effect, would deny the current owner of the dump a permit to extend operations beyond October 2017. Attorney Zanellis further explained that precedent shows that the courts would uphold the town's right to take this action. So, on the one hand, the power to close Seneca Meadows resides solely in the hands of the small, five-member Seneca Falls Town Board. In a two-for, two-against standoff, one person will hold the deciding vote. On the other hand, the growing mountains of garbage and waste affect all of Seneca County and beyond. This county office building is in the heart of the stinker zone and in the sight of those growing mountains of garbage and waste. You all spend many hours here every month. Can any county supervisor dismiss the danger to public health posed by Seneca Meadows as a Seneca Falls, Waterloo issue only? You passed a unanimous resolution against the trash train. Tonight, I urge you to resolve to stand with the citizens of Seneca Falls who oppose any new host agreement that would provide for a landfill permit beyond October 2017. Please resolve to stand in solidarity with all of us working to shut down Seneca Meadows while the town still has the power to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, the approval of minutes of August 19th, August 23rd, practical board meeting, the motion.
Motion.
The second?
Second.
Okay, motion. So, it's up to the second minute. Any discussion? On favor, seventy-five to seventy-nine?
Aye.
Poked. Gary. Thank you. Supervisor Proudy?
Whereas the vouchers reviewed by the finance assessment and insurance committee having gotten through a proper audit, now therefore be resolved that the vouchers be approved for payment.
Support.
Okay, motion on the fourth. Practice second. Any discussion? On favor, seventy-five to seventy-nine?
Aye.
Poked. Gary. Thank you. Next is a reported spending committee supervisor McGreevy, Public Health.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Health Committee met on Tuesday, August 23rd. We reviewed the department head budget requests from Public Health and Code Enforcement, and I would note that a budget workshop will be scheduled when the county manager submits his recommendations for the 2017 budget.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Davidson, other taking?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on August 23rd. Well, we've got six issues. Board of Supervisors urge Governor Coleman to sign into law Public Defense Mandate Relief Act S. eight-one, law number four slash A. one oh seven oh six. Second issue is Board of Supervisors to prevent emergency management of vehicle circles and sales to the Ramona Fire District. Third one is Board of Supervisors to accept haggis F. Y. two oh one six grant. Fourth issue, Supervisors approve and accept donation of one thousand dollars from the Seneca Falls Elks Lodge Number Nine Nine Two for the purpose, for the, excuse, for the purchase of Project Lifesaver equipment for the Seneca County Sheriff's Department. Fifth issue, Board of Supervisors approve the purchase of one explosive patrol police service dog. Sixth item is Board of Supervisors approve the creation and filling of one full-time deputy sheriff's position. That's all I have, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we don't have you. Supervisor, just please, anything for Indian Affairs?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Indian Affairs Committee did not meet at the last meeting, and right now, we're waiting on some court ruling, and as soon as we get any further information, I will bring it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Shipley. Yeah, next, Supervisor Rizero, Human Services Committee and Personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Human Services met on Tuesday, August 23rd, and we had a number of issues to address, five in total, recommendations from the Vacancy Committee, which were Social Welfare Examiner, Part-Time Agent, Services Aid, and the Heat Program, caseworker for Adult Protective, caseworker for preventative foster care, caseworker for child protective. Those were approved by committee. They do not need a board resolution. The second issue was Vacancy Committee met on August 23rd, 2016, and made the following recommendation to go ahead and post and hire a, for a Deputy Commissioner of Human Services. That was approved by the committee, and no resolution taken tonight for that. That just needed a committee resolution. We voted for to send to the board for the Supervisors to proclaim for 2016 Hunger Action Month. And the fourth issue was Supervisors authorize and approve the county manager to sign a service agreement with Bishop Sheen, Epinemical Housing Foundation Incorporated, and support their efforts in pursuit of funding for health and safety home rehabilitation and accessibility modifications. This will be brought to the board tonight. This will be brought to the board tonight, and Human Services budget presentation was made. This was only the request by the department heads workshop to be scheduled by the county manager. Meeting then ended in good order. On Tuesday, August 23rd, the Personnel Committee also met, and we discussed three issues. First issue was Supervisors abolishing one full-time clerk in the Treasury Department and creating, authorizing, filling of one accountant in the Finance Department effective immediately. That will be brought to board action tonight, and I'm going to ask my vice chair to bring that up as a motion when we get to that. Okay, Mr. Trump?
Sure.
Second issue, agreement with Total Care EAP, Employee Services Incorporated, ESI, for continuation of employee assistance services to county employees, and that will be brought up to board action tonight. And the budget presentation was made also. I sat in for Steve as vice chair for the Planning Development Agriculture and Tourism Committee on August 23rd, and we had a number of issues brought up at that meeting. And the first one was introduce proposed local law E-type Seneca County Hotel or Motel occupancy tax as authorized by paragraph 1202 all of the New York State Tax Law, and that was supported by committee and will be brought up for board action tonight. The second issue, adopt disadvantage business enterprise plan for Finger Lakes Regional Airport, and that will be brought up for board resolution tonight. Appoint member to the Seneca County Planning Board, seeking approval for appointment of Mike Enslow. That will be brought up for board approval tonight, this was approved by committee. Appoint members to the Finger Lakes Regional Airport Advisory Committee, and those names will be brought up tonight, also for board approval. And we had a discussion on county-owned law enforcement and fire training facilities at former, at the former Army Depot. That was also discussed tonight, and Mr. Churchill will discuss that issue. Although Mr. Martin did give a presentation on that, and it was well-met and it was a So, the meeting then ended in good order. So, that's the end of my reports, and Mr. Churchill will continue with the two additional items that we met on tonight.
Thank you. Hi, I'm not at all. Bob, you got anything to report? I know you didn't meet, but...
Mr.?
So, you're not done yet?
No. Uh, there's a, we had a special meeting tonight for...
Yeah, I know, but I'm going around the board.
Okay.
President Churchill will get his opportunity to speak.
Okay.
I'm just giving Mr. Eisen an opportunity to speak if he has mental health.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We did not meet, nothing to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Churchill, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Planning Development Agriculture Tourism Committee met in a special committee meeting tonight prior to this meeting. We discussed two issues. One was the authorization of a gain loan, growing the agriculture industry now, loan to Miranda Cheese, which was approved and will be coming before the board later. Second item was, we discussed a resolution in support of the IDA's plan to retain and enhance law enforcement fire training assets at the former Seneca Army Depot. That was reviewed a couple of weeks ago at the committee level, but the resolution wasn't prepared, so we discussed and approved that resolution tonight and will be coming before the board. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Ronde.
Yes, thank you. Documented, and we voted in favor for bringing it forth to board tonight to go down to Ogden, New York for our October 11, 2016 meeting, which will be at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public work's met August 23rd, and the first item was proposal for a facilities master plan for the anticipated purchase of the former Bonadent Building. Board of Supervisors authorize an RFP for a firm to develop a facilities master plan to determine the most efficient and advantageous use for office space. Five firms responded, the lowest, most qualified bid was Pasero and Associates, $77,200 unanimously approved by the committee. Second, disposal of surplus vehicles. It has been determined that 10 vehicles owned by the county, no more use of the county, should be declared a surplus. The years of the vehicles range from '91 to '06. There was a mowing complaint that was dealt with by Roy Gates with Mr. Andrews on Barton Whiskey Hill Road. Service contract between Romulus Central School and Seneca County Highway. Romulus Central School contracts to account for transportation services and use of county outdoor storage and the parking area. The current contract contains a clause that allows for both parties to extend the contract for an additional one year. Thus, the contract extension is for the period of July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017. The amount charged by the county for labor will be $38 an hour for the additional year. This is a $3 increase from the previous rate. That was unanimously approved. There's an amended contract with Barton and Lejuice Engineering Services for the Route 318 sewer project. Barton Lejuice has submitted an amended contract agreement for professional services relating to the preliminary final design permitting bidding services, construction administration, and observation of the project for a amount not to exceed $1,120,000. Funding source will be from the Route 318 capital improvement account. The last memorandum of understanding with the town of Lejuice regarding the Route 318 sewer, Waterloo premium allowance will be serviced by the 318 Sewer District when completed. Currently, it is being served by the town of Lejuice water system, or sewer system. A MOU regarding the transfer of said property to the 318 Sewer District is necessary. That is all I have.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Trump. For any further comments?
Okay. We agreed to authorize treasurer to transfer funds to fill finance department positions. What's that?
You're not a, you're part of any special committee? Yes, Senator.
Thank you, Chairman. I should have brought this up under Indian Affairs, but it's a recent event. It seems like the mayor of Rochester is trying to push the idea of a casino in Rochester. Luckily, the RFPs that were due a day or two ago, nobody submitted any. But at this point, I would ask the county attorney, Frank, if you could get ahold of Rob Williams from the governor's staff and the head of the gaming commission, and I would like to ask their opinion whether or not the Senecas would have the authority to open a casino in the Rochester area. I'm under the opinion and understanding that the Senecas have three casino licenses from New York State. They currently all are being used, so I don't know how the mayor of Rochester can openly advocate for another casino. When this board passed the resolutions regarding Lago, we also asked for an exclusion zone of a minimum of 90 miles, which I think is what we determined the distance between us and, and the Onitis facility. And I would ask Frank to have a conversation with Rob Williams, have it looked into, and report that to the Indian Affairs Committee at your earliest convenience.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, next to the supervisor comments and remarks. Um, it's a, you know, sort of a sad day when you lose an employee, it's a sad day when a good employee retires, but it's also our happy day. We're in a position now, and we have a lot of our key people at the age of retirement. I'm hoping that we have people in the trenches that have been trained by people stepping forward. I know we do. So, and as I say, we've been referring to the committees to look at people who sell our grades, so that's something we should push and take care of, and as I say, I'm really appreciative that Delago came here tonight to give an update, and that'll be a good shot, you know, because we have a lot of things going in Seneca County, a lot of things going on, and we gotta keep pushing to make sure we have our people that work here and support us. We'll continue to do so. So, I'd like to thank the disboard for our continued work and effort. Sometimes the hills have been beaches and creeks, but we already managed to get through, and we got another year, three months, and 17 more days, so who's getting trapped? Okay, and next is county managers' remarks. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, a few things to update the board. The first is the joining of Seneca County with the former Bonadent Building. There is a sales purchase agreement signed, there's an occupancy agreement signed. The, um, the teeth behind both of those is a $500,000 earnest money deposit, so both parties are in it. The, um, the occupancy agreement allowed Delago to sponsor their initial training school in the facility. They're using about 8,000 square feet, and there's also been interest in the remaining area on the west end of the building to be leased out. The selection of the facility master plan engineer and architectural efforts tonight will get us on the road to meet the biggest milestone, and that's construction-level documents to Mr. Bruce Bonfigna by 1 January to make the plan work. Delago's also in the final determination of who the third-party daycare provider will be, beginning, target beginning date of April 1st. The Enterprise Fleet Management, RFP, which was agreed upon at the last session, the county purchasing agent and myself have nearly solidified the first turn of vehicles and how best to clean our light fleet up. Tonight's efforts of declaring surplus of 10 vehicles and also pushing hand-me-downs, hand-me-down vehicles, if you will, down to organizations, departments such as facilities, and getting rid of excess vehicles, not getting rid of, but turning excess vehicles and, and high-mileage vehicles into the lease program is hopefully going to occur before the end of this year. CFA round six is already scored by the scoring committee of the Finger Lakes Regional Economic Development Council. I, as your delegated member, will look through that as well to see if I have an opportunity or a need to ask for an appeal of that initial scoring. It's 250 CFA entries for projects. Sales tax was looking good last session. We were, before midterm adjustments, this county was about $500,000 ahead of the assumed sales tax revenue for 2016. Things change in four to six weeks. The mid-year adjustments took out $500,000, and currently, the latest report is we're $20,000 behind in sales tax received for 2016. Not a scary moment. Plenty of the year left to make it up, and we're better than many of our counties in New York State, but certainly doesn't look like a windfall at this point for sales tax right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. And next, county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question was asked recently and then repeated to the extent that I wonder whether it might be a good idea to have a quick review of the open meetings law. Just so that everybody understands, under the open meetings law, certainly if you ask the New York State Committee on Open Government, open, a public meeting is essentially defined as any time that a quorum of a public body gathers together and discusses the business of that public body. I mentioned this in the context of what I gather was an invitation to the Board of Supervisors to gather for that purpose. I simply point out to you that at any time that a public body gathers and discusses public business, whether or not you vote on anything or conduct any business in terms of voting on it, that meeting is subject to the open meetings law, would have to be noticed as required under the open meetings law and open to the public, just so everybody's aware of that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, next is, uh, resolution, Supervisor Trump, number 14.
Supervisors authorize treasurer to transfer funds to fill finance department.
Okay, all time, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So noted, Mr. Zero.
Got one, no. So noted, thank you. Carrie, next is, uh, number 15, Supervisor Trump.
Seneca County Board of Supervisors to adopt county equalization rates for 2017. County tax enforcement prior to November 15, 2016.
Support?
Got motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Number 13, Supervisor Trump.
Board of Supervisors adopts Pasero Associates proposal for a facilities master plan. Support.
Got motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Supervisor Trump, number 17.
Board of Supervisors authorize disposal of surplus vehicles. Support.
Motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Supervisor Trump, number 18.
Board of Supervisors authorizes county manager to amend and sign service contract between Romulus Central School and Seneca County Highway.
Support.
Motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Supervisor Trump, number 19.
Resolution authorizing approval of amended contract with Barton and Lejuice for engineering service for the Seneca County Route 318 sewer system expansion improvement project.
Support.
Got motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? All favor, certified by the Senate, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Supervisor Trump, Joe, number 20. Supervisor Trump.
Board of Supervisors authorizes Seneca County manager to sign memorandum of understanding with the town of Lejuice regarding Route 318 sewer.
Support.
Got motion on the floor, drop the second, any discussion? Yes, Supervisor White.
Barton Lejuice came out, presented to our planning board. The planning board is digesting this memorandum. As we speak, they haven't made any formal reply to the board yet, but it is in-house, and they're recording it.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir. Yes, miss.
Yes, sir. Hi, so I'm not quite sure what that means, that...
I have the...
I, I don't understand. They're looking at it, but that doesn't have anything to do with what we're here to vote on, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure.
We're just authorizing the county manager to sign.
Okay.
Okay, any further? Yes, Supervisor White.
The town of Lejuice bought along with it?
Yeah.
Just got the information and reviewing. You said the planning board. The planning board. Then after they make their acquisition, then... It would come to, come to the town. If you haven't taken any action.
So then...
Or are we premature?
Yeah. Why are we doing this now?
We don't have the other one half of the equation done yet.
That way, we're prepared. If we do agree, we don't waste time. If they...
Then I'll sign, and it doesn't work. You're right. If they do, if they do agree to sign, then we're outside.
It saves us time.
It saves time that it passes.
And if not, we come back. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion on floor, property second, is that the Seneca County manager be authorized to sign the memorandum of understanding with the town of Junis with Route 318 sewer? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Nonsense. No opposing and one abstention.
One abstention from Supervisor Watt.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you. Okay, government act 21, Supervisor Lawrence.
Supervisors amend rules of the board to hold the board meeting at open on October 11th, 2016 at 6:00 p.m.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie. Number 22, Supervisor Churchill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution to introduce proposal of law E entitled "The Seneca County Hotel or Motel Occupancy Tax" is authorized by 1202-0 of the New York State Tax Law.
Support.
Okay, motion on floor, property second, Supervisor...
Garlick Lawrence.
Shipley. Any discussion? Sir, Supervisor Church.
Thank you, Chairman. This is the normal reauthorization that we have to do every three or four years for the hotel motel taxes. Again, this past year, we were asked by the SCAC Tourism Committee to increase the hotel tax from 3% to 4%. We did pass that. The Assembly passed it. The Senate did not. I'm disappointed that we couldn't get any cooperation from our local senator to make this happen when other, when other counties passed similar legislation. So with that in mind, just want to point out to this board that we'll be bringing, I would assume SCAC is going to ask us again to pursue this again after the first of the year. And we will take this to our newly elected senator for our district to see if we can get some support to make this happen. Thank you.
Well, I noticed in the past that we always put it in, and it always seems to, June 30th is fast approaching before they even consider it, and then they go into recess and it's the end of the...
Well, quite frankly, the way these, these are what they refer to as home rule legislation. And home rule legislation does not happen until just before they recess anyway. And they go through a couple hundred of these things in the last couple of days. So regardless if we put it in earlier or not, it wouldn't be considered until virtually the end of the legislative session. But they do not come back this year. They don't come back until January. So we're done in the water until we begin this process from the ground again next year.
Okay, thank you very much. I presume we all had a chance to read the 30 pages of resolution number 22, we're voting...
And it's basically the same thing that was passed last...
Same thing that was passed. All right, yes, sir.
This is just 3%.
Yes, this is 3%.
It's the same as what we have.
I think we're getting enough money out of Delago that we probably don't need to tax the hotels anymore with the Better Breakfast. We need to take the money from the Delago and not do... And plus, on the vacation rentals, we aren't forcing the options. Half the people are selected and half of them aren't. And same way with the Better Breakfast, we will. And SCAC does not take care of the vacation rentals, or promote them or help them out on the tour. So I'll be voting no.
Okay, any further discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Aye. Just one?
Two.
Two. Two. And a zero. Okay, Supervisor...
No, not Mr. Lozaro.
Kaiser. Oh, excuse me. Well, he raised his hand.
I was saying two.
Okay. We have, okay, so we have two negative, the rest are positive, and motion passed. Thank you. Number 23, Supervisor Churchill.
Yes, adopt disadvantaged business enterprise plan for Finger Lakes Regional Airport.
Support.
Okay, we have motion on floor, property second, by Supervisor Lawrence, that evening that you're standing up here. Any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you. Supervisor Churchill, number 24.
Yes, number 24, resolution appointing member to the Seneca County Planning Board. That person would be Mr. Mike Enslow of Waterloo, New York.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you. Number 24, Supervisor Churchill. Okay, number 25.
25. Resolution appointing members to the Finger Lakes Regional Airport Advisory Committee. Those members would be David Haynes, Hunter Mullen, and Robert Fife.
Support.
Okay, then motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, number 26, Supervisor Churchill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors authorize the Seneca County gain loan to Miranda LLC.
Okay, motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie. Number 27, Supervisor Churchill.
Board of Supervisors supports the Seneca County Industrial Development Agency's plan to retain and enhance law enforcement employer training assets at the former Army Depot.
Support.
Wow. You got somebody?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion on floor, property second. Oh, we didn't know which five people were on the news here. Any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you. Number 28, Supervisor Lozaro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. Supervisors claim September 2016 Hunger Action Month.
Support.
Supervisor McGreevy, second half, motion, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie. Number 29, Supervisor Lozaro.
Supervisors authorize and approve the county manager to sign a services agreement with Bishop Sheen Technical Housing Foundation Incorporated and support their efforts to pursue funding for health and safety home rehabilitation and accessibility modifications.
Support.
Yeah, motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you. Number 30, Supervisor Lozaro.
Mr. Trout, will you take this one?
Yes, sir. Supervisors abolish one full-time accountant clerk position in the treasurer's department and create an authorized filling of one accountant position in the finance department effective immediately.
Support.
Yeah, motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed?
Aye.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Trout?
Aye.
Mr. Colonel, Mr. Colonel Wetter?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mrs. Garlick Lawrence Eddie?
Yeah.
Mr. Waddums?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Proudy?
Yes.
Mr. Kaiser?
Yes.
Mr. Lozaro?
No.
Mr. Churchill?
No.
Mr. McGreevy?
Yes.
Mr. Heisen?
No.
Mr. Westphal?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Okay, the vote is 572 yes, 178 no. Motion carries. Number 32, 31, excuse me. You're doing this one, Supervisor Lozaro?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Board of Supervisors joins with the ESI group Total Care BAP to continue providing employee assistance services to Seneca County employees.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie. Now, number 32, Supervisor Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board of Supervisors urge the Governor Colmo to sign into law Public Defense Amendment Relief Act S.8114 slash A.10706.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie.
Number 33, Mr. Chairman, is Supervisors approve and accept the nomination of $1,000 from Seneca Falls Devil's Lodge, number 992, for the purchase of project lifesaver equipment for the Seneca County Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie.
Number 34, Board of Supervisors approve the purchase of one explosive patrol police service volunteer.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, Supervisor Kaiser.
Can we not get a dog in its clothes?
Multi-Test?
Yeah. You're reaching on that later.
Okay, anybody else? First, the cabinet, Supervisor Eisen.
Do they have enough money for the training and all this? We had two numbers on this a couple of weeks ago. Are they still happy with the $13,250? The $13,000?
That's a figure. Agent America...
I can take it, Sheriff. Uh, Chairman, the $13,250 is the total amount required to replace the...
Having the train?
Yes. That's correct, Sheriff. That is correct.
All in closing. Okay, any further discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you.
Number 35, Board of Supervisors approve and create the filling of one full-time deputy sheriff position.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you very much. Number 36.
Board of Supervisors declare emergency management vehicle surplus and sell to the Rochester Fire Protection Division.
Support.
Motion on floor, property second, any discussion? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie. Any unfinished bid with the committee board this evening?
I would like... I was wondering, while you guys have come to my, uh, wall stop board meeting, this meeting ran really quickly. Like those meetings run more quickly.
Okay. I'll get to you. Supervisor Davidson.
Yes, sir. I'd just like to say, I think, I don't think he's still here. Rich Ricky was here earlier, and I would like to publicly thank him for the invitation we got to go to the Atticade. It was a very interesting evening, and I think that's a real big deal.
They don't have that. Their time is...
They have that before, so... Did you blow, did you blow your...
I won $28.10. On a horse.
Yeah. You know that horse buffet they served was pretty good. Okay, it was a good time had by y'all, so... Yes, sir.
In regards to our new radio system, Melissa's working on it, and there was a meeting in Junis for the radios, and it doesn't work in all situations. Waterloo, Seneca Falls works fine, but you get the outlying lands in the county, Lodi down that way, there's problems. There's problems up in the north end in Junis. They're currently working on it, but we've been working on this for nine months, and I think we really want to address something there because in six months, you're going to have 10,000 people a day coming into the county. And if you can't call for services, it may be unpredictable.
Frank, is that due to placement antenna? Do we know what the problem is?
Nobody knows for sure what the problem is, yes. They've done some Band-Aid fixes, some man-ons. They had Finger Lakes one out there. They had the engineer that's the engineer for the county that's the liaison between motor roll and design the system. And, you know, they've been trying different tweaks and they haven't hit it yet. And we got six months before the doors will be open. So we're going to have to get it quick. I mean, my own estimation, if it was me, if I'd been battling for nine months, if I bought something and they couldn't fix it by now, you know me well enough, it'd be in a box in the middle of the road to come get it. And I'd be looking for something different, so... I just wanted to make the rest of the supervisors aware, we paid some pretty good money and I'm coming in on the tail end of this, but it is a concern because we do a lot of covering for McGee, and if you can't communicate, you've got a problem.
Okay, we're aware of it. Anything else? We do business. That's your order of the day.
So moved.
Motion second? Ball, you're saying that motion. Motion on floor, property second, that this meeting be adjourned? All favorists and bad guys saying aye? Aye. opposed? Carrie, thank you. Thank you.